We can take fourteen thousand ninety-one and pay the difference of seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four seventy-five and repair the bus. And that's where we were, and then we went into our meeting. And Bob had several options for us. Basically, his recommendation was, take the, let them retain the bus. And we take the check and go shopping for another one small.
It's surprising on how cheap you can find a bus.
And how many there are.
Yeah, he's got a lot, lot to select from. He was looking at one, sixty-two hundred dollars, I think was one that he threw out. That would actually be a.
A sixty-passenger bus.
Yes.
Hundred dollars more.
One that was thirty-eight hundred, too.
Yeah.
That one was.
Diesel.
So by, by taking the settlement anyway on the insurance.
Most of them are diesel.
Or we're basically, we could probably replace two buses with a settlement to one bus. And so it's kind of a no-brainer, so I think we all kind of agreed, we're just gonna have Bob do his thing, and.
The thing I thought was interesting, I didn't realize that buses and various options have to have specialty licenses to drive them. Air brakes, hydraulic brakes, rigid brakes, all different specialties, so if we have vans, the coaches could drive, you don't need any of that.
This is the only bus we have with air brakes, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so if they get none about air brakes, then they'll have to have that.
Yeah.
Makes it easier to get drivers.
Didn't somebody say it's harder to get a license, the CDL, and they get more difficult?
It's complicated, yeah.
They can't do it locally anymore, you gotta go to a bus carney.
It's a pain, it's quite a pain in the butt to get one, I mean.
Is he gonna want for one that's got that under storage, you know? If a small bus can't get.
He might get lucky with one of those, I mean, I think that under carriage storage is on your, your, your larger buses like that one was, so be- because we purchased that trailer, that gives us a good option on those activities where they would need football gear or whether it's one act or just whatever it might be. We can always pull that trailer, so he didn't think that undercarriage storage was that big a deal to lose?
No, that'll work.
I wasn't aware of tonight, only until tonight, that there's no government funding to replace a bus faster money, but. So if we take the seventeen thousand two sixty-six and Bob's talking, we can probably get two buses for that.
Cause we have one other bus, number nine, it's a gas burner, it's got a cracked block, hasn't moved in, what'd they say, two years or something?
Yeah, one he's been stripping for parts and seats and stuff, so we've got two junkers that need to be scrapped.
And a route bus with over two hundred thousand that he wants to let go here pretty quick, so if he were to shop for a, a new, an activity bus and a route bus, we could potentially, for the cost, for the settlement check, find two reliable ones.
Why is the settlement check so high if the bus isn't worth anything?
I don't, we don't know. It's just.
It's got a, something about the motor, right?
It's got a rebuilt engine.
Could be.
So. Yeah.
It's gotta weigh a lot for scrap, too.
Yeah, I don't, and I, I don't know what your premiums were anyway on the coverage anyway, but. You know, I would say it's, it's possible that maybe your premiums were a little high.
It would have to be, I guess, to get a higher settlement.
Higher settlement like that, so.
And then seventy-eight passenger, that, that buses are worth considerable lot more than what the other ones are, like he's told us to.
Plus, he said the heater in this big one wasn't worth a damn, cause it came out of the desert, air conditioning was great for the heater.
I know it did, a couple times this way.
Yeah.
Chili back there.
No way you can pull that trailer behind the bus legally?
No, I, I, I don't know for sure, but I wouldn't think you could legally. So.
And I sort of take a separate vehicle just to pull the trailer.
We already hit a curb with just.
This one's gonna be so short. Finally, as we hit the very front, it wasn't the back.
Do you do the motion?
At item fifteen.
What year is that?
Action items.
Action item fifteen, we can.
Okay, on number ten, review of board policies, five oh four two oh, five oh eight oh one, five oh eight oh two, five oh eight oh three, thousand five oh three.
Your five oh four twenty is your annual review required by state statute of the district's bullying policy. So, boards are just required to look at it every year and reflect on, you know, anything that may or may not have happened throughout the year and how it was handled, if the policy's appropriate. I don't know that the administrative team has any recommendation for language change on five oh four twenty.
Any disciplinary things you guys did this year, they'll turn out satisfactory, will they?
So you're not recommending any changes there?
Not on five oh four twenty.
Five oh eight oh one?
And five oh eight oh one, two, and three, interesting, as you, you know, found out, this is about, you know, student health and student illness or injury at school, communicable infectious diseases. I think our, our list on five oh eight oh three E one about communicable diseases, it's just kind of ironic that there's quite a lengthy list here and no, on, nowhere on their list do you find anything about the norovirus, which coronavirus comes from. So I, I will expect that we'll be getting some updated language, maybe for our communicable disease policy, administration of meds soon, so on these three policies, I did send copies to our school nurse and said, just, hey, look, these over with us, you know, particularly with administrative of meds and such. And, you know, she had, she had a couple of concerns about some of the language that, that are in these three policies, and so I think because it's summertime and our communication is not as fluid with the school nurse, I think I want to table these for next, till next month if we can, just to give me a little more chance and maybe even invite Nurse Beth to come to the meeting in July if she would be so kind to do so, just to make sure we get, you know, the language right on these. There, there wasn't anything, as I looked through them, that I, that I thought needed to be changed. You know, anytime you talk about students' meds and the dissemination of meds at school, you know, we, we kind of, when it comes to things like ibuprofen or acetaminophen, aspirin, whatever, you know, technically, kids are not supposed to have that in their locker and administer it to themselves, that's all supposed to go through the office, but we know that that exists. You know, it's in their backpacks, it's in their lockers now, we don't see kids dispensing meds to other kids. You know, that would probably be something we would, you know, address, but, you know, this makes us think about, you know, that procedure and how we communicate that to kids, that, and again, it's just one of those things that we, it's like rolling slowly through a stop sign, we don't necessarily consider a crime that they might have their own little bottle of ibuprofen, but, but it's part of these policies, and it makes us think about it, and which is a reason to review, I guess, every, every month, so.
So how much of these are in Nebraska statute, how much of them are just our policies, how much are.
Uh, I believe they are all grounded in statute.
So we really can't change anything?
Yeah, well, you know, there, there are some things in the language that you might have a little bit of play with, but yes, you, if we were to, and Nurse Beth would know, you know, you know, better than I, even on, you know, some of the medical aspects of them, but. So if we can, you know, maybe just table these for a month, if you're okay with that.
Hey, I did have a question.
Which one?
Five oh eight oh one.
Yep.
The seventh graders or any transfer from out of state, they have to have a physical within six months.
Yeah.
So if you get a physical in June and you transfer in January, we're supposed to make them go back and get another one?
If it's not within six months, according to policy, yeah.
So is that something we could look at changing to work on in your versus this one?
If statute holds, then I guess we, we have that option.
That's just seventh graders as well.
And any transfers from out of state.
Transfers from out of state, kindergartners, seventh graders, and transfers from out of state.
So kindergartners would be the same thing if they came in halfway through the year, they'd have to go get another one also. Okay, so thousand nine four oh three.
Okay, this one also is required by statute to review annually, parent involvement in schools, I just want to make sure that school boards are very well aware of and comfortable with the language that they have with regard to parents being involved in the education of their children. I don't have any recommendations for language change on this one.
Do they have any questions, Danos?
How often does the state come out with that list of communicable diseases?
Well.
Infectious diseases. Cause that last one was two thousand, where did I read that, two thousand fifteen?
Yeah.
Probably every time they add.
Well, wow.
I'm, I'm kind of surprised that that's the latest date on that, I thought the same thing, Deb. So, I would guess that maybe any day I should be getting an email from NASB, who's our policy subscriber, with new policies, language changes primarily as a result of unicameral's last session. So it usually takes them about a few months to, and I've got a legislative update coming for you next. So there's always just a lot of tweaks in policies based on language, based on unicameral actions. So that could be in there, yeah.
Okay, so more questions, we'll move on to number eleven, legislative update.
Okay, so in your packet, I did provide you with a handout.
Handout, cool.
Trying to be thorough. Let's see. And, you know, so you can read through this at your own leisure, but a few that I would maybe just direct your attention to that might affect us a little more in our operations here, maybe LB three twenty-two, which is Adopt the School Safety and Security Reporting System Act, and I do have a flyer for you. I'll watch, I'll be watching a webinar or a Zoom meeting on one of these dates. And it's about a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five access hotline for people to call and get support. I've got a handout of this for you, too. So, just, you know, always, you know, highlighting safety and security, obviously, in the schools, and so LB three twenty-two does address that. And that pamphlet's a little bit of information about that. LB three ninety-six is about the Adopt the Nebraska Farm-to-School Program Act, and so this is something that, you know, I definitely would like to work with the board on to see if we can expand, you're, you're familiar with local beef in schools, a lot of schools do that. This takes it even a step further, so that's on page nine of your handout there. Provide schools with fresh and minimally processed food for inclusion in school meals and snacks, encourages children to develop healthy eating habits, improves the incomes of Nebraska farmers who will enjoy direct access to consumer markets. The program may include activities that provide students with hands-on learning opportunities such as farm visits, cooking demonstrations, school gardening, composting programs that integrate nutrition and agricultural education in the school curriculum. Being in an agrarian society, obviously, and, and culture here, I just would like to see us take advantage of whatever options we have under LB three ninety-six. So I'll be kind of pursuing that a little more. LB four fifty-two, on page twelve, Adopt the Financial Literacy Act, beginning with school year twenty-three, twenty-four, each school district must include financial literacy instruction, the instruction program of its elementary, middle schools, for our students to complete at least five credit high school course in personal finance or financial literacy prior to graduating, we already do this. But it looks like there may be, they might try to reach down into the lower grades with financial literacy. So what that would look like will all be developed before the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and, and so that will affect us down the road just a little bit. LB six thirty-nine, Adopt the Seiz- Seizure Safe Schools Act, so more training at the start of the year for teachers on a variety of things. We have a lot of one-hour trainings and this, and this, and this, here's another one, training requirement necessary for, to assist with the self-administration of seizure rescue medications, so teachers are gonna have to be trained on how to respond to a seizure incident. Okay, so more, just more training for teachers. Let's see, can you, you'll kind of look through all those, and then there's a lot of interim studies, so these are bills that didn't pass, but didn't, but they wanted more information, and they'll come back in the next legislative session, you can look through those at your leisure, but nothing too dramatic that happened in the unicameral this last session that's gonna directly and immediately affect us in our operations here.
What ended up happening with that new healthcare curriculum?
Oh, it's still out there, as far as I know, and that's coming through the State Board of Education, not the unicameral.
Gotcha.
And if, if the state board were to pass it, school districts would not be required to adopt it, and I think that's the main thing that people need to understand, which, because it's not core curriculum, they can mandate certain curriculums. In public schools, obviously, they're the State Board of Education, but this one would not be a mandated curriculum for, so every school board, every local school board then would be put in a position to decide whether they were gonna adopt the health curriculum from the Department of Ed, so I'll keep you posted on that, I'll learn a lot more about that coming up at Administrator Days here in about six weeks, where they're at with that and what we can expect. I haven't been, you know, spending too much time being too concerned or too worried about it because it's not gonna be a mandated curriculum.
Here, number twelve, S R three.
Okay, I did confirm for you in an email last week, I believe, that our S R three money did come in. You know, over five hundred thousand, obviously, that's our precise amount, so I've started working on the grant for that, just some of the groundwork for it, but I think our budget committee is gonna need to meet again, we've got, I, I don't know when the deadline is for the grant, but you can always amend your grant. Our S R two is done, board, you know, approved the two hundred and thirty-one and change on that, where we wanted that to go, so that's done. So here's a rather significant amount for probably, you know, the budget committee to consider, different options. You know, a lot of school districts are struggling to, like I mentioned before, where, where to spend their millions and millions of dollars, because you can't just dump it in your general fund, as you know, but there are definitely some, maybe some HVAC projects, that'll be spendy. I don't have a bid yet on the windows for the nineteen twenty building, that'll be spendy. So, whether sometime before the next board meeting or certainly by August would be a, a good time to meet for the first time, I guess, as a budget committee, and budget committee will obviously meet in August anyways, we prepare for the next fiscal year, so.
Probably not looking to get any more projects done, though, until next summer, are we? Major project, I mean, air conditioning or something, but as far as windows.
No, even the AC, the rooftop, rooftop unit for this room, which went out about a year ago, won't be done for this fall. Ruts came, for whatever reason, they just did not hustle with that bid for you to consider. I did get a, the facility advocates did do a full facility energy audit, and I have that, just came in yesterday, so we can kind of start to consider that. You know, I, I've had more than one, I probably, I probably had three people bring up air, gym air conditioning again. Now that it looks like, you know, we have this windfall, so I suppose that is something to be.
Which, which gym?
Both. Cause it, it would be hard to choose, honestly, which one is used more in the, in a superheated environment. But at any rate, that's a, something to think about and talk about in the coming months.
Okay, number thirteen, board development, section of board governance and fundamentals of board service. Got a redo of last month, same section, a lot of stuff in there. All good stuff, I think you can pretty much start reading it over again, I realize you read it last month. Couple times I just drew an arrow by that kind of stuck out to me, was, one of them was recognized as the board members' responsibilities to see that the schools are well-run, but not to run them. Right below that says, seek to employ the most qualified school staff and assist on regular impartial employee evaluations. Another one is consider the needs of the entire community and hope for what is best for the students. There's a, ability to agree or disagree to support the majority of the board. And I don't know, maybe I should, shouldn't bring this up, but reading through here, yeah, there's a section on conflict of interest, and I know I've heard that a couple times, any chance I'm not trying to pull you out or say you're right or wrong or anything, but I just, since it's here in this section, I just kind of wondered if this answered any of your feelings or backed, backed up your thoughts on, on what your feelings were, supported your feelings, or if they helped you understand a different view of them, or, you know, cause I guess it kind of concerns me that you feel that way about, I don't know if it's about the board or about staff members or what, but and I guess if you don't want to discuss it, that's fine, but, I mean, I just think if we all want to come together closer as a board, we kind of know, it'd be nice to know how each other kind of feels, and talk through it, not to change your mind or say you're right or wrong or indifferent, but just, just to.
I just feel a simple conflict of interest is a conflict of interest, I mean, it's simple. I mean, whatever. I think it's, I think we all know where I stand on that, so. So no, to answer your question, what some people in Omaha wrote down on the thing did not change my mind. Cause you just, your other point just a little bit ago said you had to have impartial assessment of somebody, kind of hard to be impartial if you have a conflict of interest.
What is the conflict of interest?
Well.
Maybe there's some context that I'm missing or something, Adam?
Mike?
I don't know, I just, you've, you've brought it a couple times about you thought there was a lot of conflict of interest in the school or on this board, and never went into detail what, what that was.
Well, I don't want to single people out, but you have a son and a daughter-in-law that work here.
Which I didn't hire, and they were.
But doesn't matter.
I got a board.
Tim has a wife that works at the school, Mrs. Jensen subs at the school, Dr. Earl's wife works in the building across the street in the school, I mean.
So you don't feel like we should hire her?
No, I don't, I never have thought that. You just said we have our right to have our own opinion, so.
Right, no, I'm not trying to change your mind, I'm just trying to understand what your feeling is and why, but I respect that. I mean, you're, you're more than.
Some points I agree with him, but some points, we ain't got that many people to choose from either, you don't have to be qualified to do the job.
I agree.
We have a policy on nepotism, right?
Yep.
I think I've read that.
Yep.
It's pretty quick, guys, that it's allowed. Family members are allowed to be hired.
Yep, my brother is too.
And even the family members, they're not evaluated by, like if, if one of them has spouse, it's usually evaluated, or they are evaluated by somebody else, superintendent or a different principal, and the other thing, you know, like, I, I totally get what you're saying, Chance, but the people you're talking about, we have quality people in here, invested interest in these kids, and that's what's most important, is the kids and, and the way they teach, I've worked with all the people that you've mentioned, excellent teachers, excellent IT.
I'm not taking any away.
I, I know, yeah, I just feel, I want you to feel comfortable with them, because.
I'm perfectly comfortable with them, just in trying to say the conflict of interest thing is just, I, it really, you guys don't understand, my job that I work in, my crop insurance job is, conflict of interest is hammered into our heads big time. Like, I can't even work a claim for somebody that's like a shirt-tail relation, not supposed to.
Yeah, and that's where schools are totally different in a, in a business, they are, it's just, it's just a fact. Yeah, it is, yeah, I see what you're saying, though, Larry has the same kind of thing going on, but it's a whole different world.
I agree with you, but my answer is we don't have that luxury.
Oh, I agree, I just say.
And I just think that with less.
I just, no, the biggest thing that bothered me is a couple meetings ago, we voted on the, whatever you call the staff that's not union classified, and technically, I feel like you three should have abstained, because one of the persons was, you know, and one of them was yours, and you sub at the school, right, correct, correct?
Oh, I do, I do.
And so I just feel like you should have said, I, I have conflict of interest, I should abstain from this, that's.
For the, the.
For that vote.
Was that for the salary and?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that wouldn't affect me as a sub.
Okay.
I abstained a couple years ago, maybe single or out, but I didn't technically.
And I, I've read that on paper board, and I'm not, I'm just.
You know, I might be.
I'm not gonna lie, it feels this way, other people talk to me about it, that's why I bring them.
No, and I'm like, you know what, Chance would be a good idea if you just say, would, would it be possible that you abstained from this vote because it does affect your family, because I wouldn't even have thought of that if you had said, and said anything. So I, I think it would be a good idea for you to bring that up.
As a whole block, I kind of.
Yeah, I know.
But we would have to have more than three people.
Yeah, 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 when you have a vote.
If you had a lot of people that wouldn't have gotten a raise, then if you had three people abstaining from a vote.
Yeah, you couldn't have voted.
We couldn't have voted.
Oh.
The motion would not have passed.
Yeah, there you go with your small community.
Exactly.
And it wasn't, you know, there wasn't any on the line.
Well, it's, it's not improper, I mean, I think you're assuming there's something improper going on. If you have evidence that there's something improper going on between Mr. Sauer and his role as board president and family members that are on the staff, or something improper going on between the superintendent and, and professional relationship between a staff member, if you have evidence of that, then, then I think that's legitimate, but just to assume that there's improper decisions being made because there's, you know, relations, family relations is, you know, I think, you know, quite, quite strange to assume that.
And on the vote part, too, if you look back at the vote, I'm sure they were unanimous, so it wasn't like.
I agree, but it does come up.
If it abstained, it would have been what?
Ain't nothing you can do about it.
I don't think anybody would suggest that Mrs. Arnold or Mr. Sauer or Mrs. Sauer, whoever.
I think you're missing the point, Dr. Earl, I think my point is, is like, the people, the concerned people I've had talk to me, and then you guys are probably getting mad at me, but they feel like certain board members can't say what they really want to say because they're, they're tied because they don't want their family member to be reprimanded or something, so.
I don't know who these people are.
Have you, have you reverted to Dr. Earl?
No, they don't want to talk to him.
Well, that's your chain of command, you're supposed to.
And what if, I mean, I feel that way as a public member, that's why I ran for the board.
You feel that we would intentionally go and be in retribution, do you have any, any evidence that that's ever happened before? That we have behaved improperly?
Pretty easy to hide stuff, Dr. Earl, let's be honest.
Because, so are you suggesting that we're hiding improper behavior?
I'm just saying it looks bad.
Okay, I didn't start this because I want to get in an argument, I, I started this because I wanted to hear what your feelings were, and, I mean, I respect your feelings, and I appreciate that you shared them with us, but I didn't start this to get in an argument or to change your mind, but, so, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear the air and try and, you know, so we as a board know where each other stands and why, and now we know, and I respect that, so. So, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear the air and try and, you know, so we as a board know where each other stands and why, and now we don't, and I respect that, so. Does anybody else that has anything, any other points or parts that stuck out to them, they want to bring up?
Hey, I've been through this several three times, last time in this month.
I think you're about the one that talked last month.
I'm just telling you right now, it was all new to me then, when I read it this time, but I think what really is important is that we work as a team and that we do have this discussion and that we respect the other people's opinions, and that we do some board development together to work as a team.
It's the reason we have a board.
Exactly. So, I think that's really important in chance, I mean, I'm glad you, you know, were able to talk to us about that, and that's the way it should be. Oh, and I also thought, you know, the chance man, I gotta remember that myself, you know, that was ingrained to me as a teacher, and now it's a little different, on a, a different shoe or a different hat, I think that's important. That we all are consistent in that.
Now you know why parents were calling you because we were telling them to.
I'm just saying that I think consistency amongst the board is really important too.
Yeah, so they can't, you hang up, have one of them, not give them the answer they want, then they know they can go and the other one get the answer they want.
Yeah, so.
And, you know, I talked about in here about the person that is notified, the board member contacting the superintendent to take it over, and we kind of went the other direction about involving the whole board, you know, that one time you said to yell out to the whole board. I don't know whether we should do it one way or another is better.
Well, I think if somebody calls me, I think, you know, I, I want to listen, but I also want them to talk to the person that really involves and go through that chain, but I also think it's fair for our administration, if it's the principal or the superintendent, to be aware of this. If they're, they don't know the problems and all of a sudden they hear and it's been brewing and stewing for two months, that's not fair to anybody.
Sure.
I mean, there can't be any changes unless it's from the top down. If they have a concern, they should, we should let this, the administration know, this, this parent, this parent has a valid concern, I directed them to that person, now it's your fault court.
And I think the example you're giving was the email that I sent out, I think I was the third person that that person contacted on the board.
Right.
And so, um, yeah, I mean, they were going right down the list anyway, so I guess I felt it was necessary to at least include everyone in the email. I, you know, one thing that I think that needs to be said, here they're talking about positive board qualities, anyway, and there's, there's a lot of good things here, you know, demonstrate open and honest respect of communications and confidentiality, exhibit trustworthy actions and intentions. But one thing here that really sticks out to me is the fact that we need to accept that as a board member, we don't possess any authority outside of the board committee. We can't just walk down the street, you know, stick our chests, puff our chests out and think that we represent the public, you know, it, and then until we're in this room here and the meeting is in session, we honestly, we're just another member of the public.
And that's why it's important to pass that on, that those concerns or those celebrations or whatever.
The only issue I have with the chain of command thing is, I guess I, like if you have an issue with your tractor getting worked on, John Deere in the shop form, I can't handle it, he goes to the next guy above you, right? Or the mechanic, let's say you have an issue with mechanic because he did a bad job. I mean, that, that's one, I don't feel like it's that big a deal that they call the board because I mean, in all honesty, these, everybody here works for us in a way.
For us as a board or us as a district?
No, we're just responsible for one person, right?
But we're the head, we're like, we're the head of the.
Well, we make the decisions, but they don't work for us, they work for all of us.
I'm just saying, I don't think, I'm not saying that we shouldn't pass it back down, and I think, I agree with Wyatt, I think it needs to be sent to, to send an email out to everybody, but I don't think that we need to reprimand a parent because they called us and said.
No, 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 I agree.
No, they can call us.
No, never recommend, you need to listen.
We just are supposed to refer it.
Yeah, talk to them about, have you talked to that person? And then like, you know, there can't be any, any change unless we let people know that has the power to do some changes or to address it.
And I think one thing we've started too is once it's directed to Dr. Earl, that there is an issue, then when it's handled, we want to give permission back.
Yes, yes, or even check on, you know, maybe a week later, have you visited with that person about this situation? And ask, you know, as long as we let them know that there's a concern, then it's in their court to address it, however.
A lot of times we don't know anything other than what that person that, or all this, that talked to us, that's half the story.
Right.
And we probably do nothing to tell them.
It's kind of like kindergarten parents always told, you believe half of my kids, half of they tell everybody. So, have to get the whole story, so.
Okay. Good discussion, appreciate all your opinions. Okay, number fourteen, action items, discuss and take possible action on setting breakfast lunch prices for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Got a pretty healthy balance, COVID's been good to the lunch fund, so certainly, I think we went up a nickel last year, well, you've got the trends there. So, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to do anything with the lunch prices unless you want to lower them, which I don't recommend that either.
I think the only one nutritional services ever has problems with is our adult one.
We went up a, we went up maybe a dime on that one last year.
So, an adult?
Yeah, that's, they like to see that, they have to weigh that price if they like to see on that, so.
We went up thirty-five cents on that last year.
Yeah, that's why, because they were.
The last two years, we went up thirty-five cents on the adults, so we're, we're, we're in line with where we need to be. So I didn't kind of even pencil that in on your exhibit number fourteen.
They're looking at making any difference, changes in the cafeteria for next year.
Yeah, it'd be good to get, you know, some things, you know, back the way they were, I mean, and, and we'll always, you know, look at portion sizes and, um, which I think is a, you know, a primary thing is, is kids having enough to eat. Variety of menu is always a challenge, it just, it just is when you're, when you're feeding, you know, two hundred and fifty kids.
So when you're looking at this beef deal or whatever that we talked about earlier, does that change what you can and can't do with your meals and stuff, in your opinion?
No.
Can you serve a better portion of meat because you're?
It just, it just promotes, yeah, just local produce and local beef used in the schools, obviously there's process you have to go through, a butcher, approved butcher and so on. But.
So there would be no mess for you?
Kangaroo.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend that.
I mean, I don't know whether, I know Miranda does some of that, they have people that donate. I don't really.
Cheap shot. I'll put you on the list if people ask about donating.
What they do is they, they donate the beef, and then they, they use the hamburger and all the steaks and stuff they auction off like at halftime of the ball game to help pay for the process.
Yeah, that's great for them. Yeah, that's bad.
Have you, have you been following the price of beef right now? It's not good for people like Wyatt and that.
Well, you're losing money on them anyway, so. But I don't know whether they can, they serve a different meal because of, you know, a little bit better meat to start out with or not.
I, I, I don't know, I would assume that, you know, local ground beef would be better than what they get.
Absolutely.
You know, whether, but it's, it's more to help the local farmers and ag society, I think, than it is to.
And a promotion for.
Yeah, promotion for that, than it is to, no pun intended, beef up your menu, but.
Well, couldn't hurt it, I wouldn't say.
No, it's great.
I would assume it would increase our prices, I would.
Depends on whether it's donated or charge full price or whatever.
Yeah, real hood.
Yeah.
There's a difference, there's an absolute difference.
The only thing it would have changed would be the meat, I mean, everything else would still be the same, unless you raise a hundred acres of sweet corn or something.
Well, I got a neighbor that does.
Okay, so do we, we don't have to take action on that for not changing, right?
Yeah, you, you don't, I mean, you, you could, somebody could make a motion to leave lunch prices the same for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, I guess, just to.
I'm gonna make a motion to set the breakfast and lunch prices, leave them at the same for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year school year.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance? Yep.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion very six zero. Fifteen, discuss and take possible action on repair, replace bus. Do you want to go ahead and make the motion, then I'll ask if there's any more comments after you make it.
I make the motion, accept the seventeen thousand two hundred and sixty-six settlement, and EMC Insurance Company retains ownership and possession of the bus, also to allow Bob McKay to shop for a smaller bus.
Second.
Second.
Okay, that's my first, second, is there any more discussion?
Do you want to add in there that, to get rid of that one with the cracked block?
He, he was, Bob was gonna, I don't, I don't know that you do, I mean, I, you know, he's got two, I think, that he wants to go to salvage. You know, I mean, they, they, because the value of them is so low, we don't have to go through a formal process for public property.
What about adding, looking for two buses? Let's see what he comes up with.
Smaller buses.
There you go. Plural.
With an intention to purchase.
Smaller buses.
A small business.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't hear this.
I did make a mistake.
So this is plural now?
Yeah.
Okay, myself, yes, Tim.
Yes.
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion very six zero. Number sixteen, discuss and take possible action on revising policy five oh four point one five to add random drug testing.
We have an existing policy about drugs, tobacco and alcohol, the school district's required to have that. Mr. Schmidt's been working on this, you know, for, for several months and been thinking about it for over a year, I'm sure, so you've got some pretty lengthy language, this will require two readings. So it does give us an opportunity over the course of the next month really to make sure our public is aware that the board's considering this, but Mr. Schmidt can talk about the basic details of it.
So what it would do, it would test any student that's in ninth or twelfth grade that's involved in any form of extracurricular activity. So really the only kid that wouldn't get tested would be somebody who comes here and goes to class and goes home, that's it. FCC LA falls in that, music falls in that, any NSA activity, then you throw in FFA, FCC LA, FCA, our leadership group, things like that, gets the numbers up pretty quick. Parents would also have the option to option their kid into the testing program, so say there's a kid that's not involved in anything, those parents can still have their kid put into that random selection. So what I would do then is when selecting students, they have all the students' names, you assign them a number, and then you put all the numbers into a random selection, and it would pull out two numbers, you go find those two names, and then you would test those students. I was looking at testing two students a week, so it would be right around, I think, eighty tests for a year, is what that would come down to. The testing procedure, the collection, it would be your basic urine test, it's supposed to resemble CDL employees and what they do, so that way I've talked with Nurse Beth, when she's here, she would be able to administer the test and read it for us. And she's the one who's been looking up where we can get them from, quotes, things of that sense. I have a list of all the activities that we would involve in that, and then what would happen if you tested positive, or what does it mean, the test positive? Obviously, if the test comes back positive, that's going to be a positive test, refusal to participate in testing, meaning that if you get selected to test and you don't do it, that's an automatic positive. Or if you decide to sign a drop form when you are requested the test, that's also considered positive and then tampering with the test. So at the beginning of the year, anybody who's involved in whatever it might be has to fill out a form to put themselves into the testing pool, and then at any point in time throughout the year, a student can fill out a drop form that would take them out of that pool to not be tested anymore. But if a student wants to do that, it makes them ineligible to participate in anything for three hundred and sixty-five days. So that eliminates the kids who, I'm gonna play football, and when football's over, I'm gonna drop my name out, and then I'm gonna go back in when school starts, because if you do it at the end, that takes you to the end of the following season. So that's why I put that part in there.
So what are we testing for, is this like, they would equal drugs or?
Yes, so it would be testing for marijuana, alcohol, any paraphernalia, and it would be cocaine, pharmaceuticals, it also tests for. So there is a part in there where if they're on a medication or whatever, and nobody knows about it, and they test and it comes back positive, if a parent writes a letter to the school within five days and shows the prescription that they were taking, then it would be taken off of a positive test. But yeah, it's supposed to test for all of your pharmaceuticals that you would have, marijuana, cocaine, methamphetamine, alcohol.
Yeah, I'm fine with all of them on there except for the alcohol, one of those too.
I mean, I don't want to sound old, but you, I mean, you're beating the bushes, whatever happened to the fact that a coach can tell? And that's when you pick, I mean, to me, Principal Schmidt, that's a hell of a lot of kids to test for our population, I mean, you're doing two a month, and that's, right, two a month?
You do two a week, two a month.
So you haven't decided on how many though?
I would like to do two a week, but that's my personal opinion.
Do you think we have a problem? That's why I'm just asking.
I guess I'm kind of surprised by all of it.
I have had it mentioned to me on multiple occasions that people think that there is substance in that, that our kids are using, or that there's substance issues around our school and around our kids, so, I guess I kind of went.
Okay, who's, who's paying for it?
So the test would be, if we ordered a hundred of them, I believe, about sixteen dollars a test, so it would be right around that eighteen hundred to two thousand dollar range, I think, is what it'd be for tests for a year. And so once we buy the test, we do the testing in-house, and then that's the only expense that we would have. If you tested positive, so like the first offense, you'd have fourteen calendar days that you have to set out, and then we'd also require the student to complete a drug and alcohol assessment by a certified drug counselor, and that's at their expense, so.
We, we had discussed a depth probe on privacy of students and records earlier, how does that affect that?
School, well.
Remember what I'm talking about?
Yeah, but, um, this is, there are dozens and dozens of school districts that do it, so I don't know the, the specific, uh, legal language that authorizes schools to, to do random drug testing. But it's been going on for years in dozens and dozens of schools, so.
Yeah, my, my question is.
But in terms of sharing of information, well.
Protect the child.
Yeah, but if a kid is ineligible for an activity, people will come to their own conclusions, I guess, and yeah, we wouldn't publicize that, we wouldn't make that, but folks would come to those conclusions.
I'm with you, but how about after they graduate and they're looking for a job, can they come back and find out?
No.
So law enforcement's not contacted?
No.
If that's, if that's the part that.
Well, it's just, you know, some kids have rough high school and they go out and they, they try to go to college, get a decent job, and I don't want to kick the stool out for my, that's what I'm saying.
There's nothing in a, in a student's high school personnel file that becomes public information that they, uh, they have to, they have the authority to share any of that information, but essentially the only thing that gets shared is, you know, attendance and academic records. But a potential employer, you know, would, would maybe ask for references from school and such, but, but no, there wouldn't be anything automatic where a positive test as a tenth grader, for example, is now going to close all kinds of doors down in the future. So, you know, with, with.
No ureter punctures, only urine, right?
Yes. With regard to, I mean, it's, I've been here five years and probably three, on three different occasions over those five years, I've heard that the talk downtown is the drug problem at the school. So it, in every school I've been at, it's, there, there's been chatter at various times that there are drugs in the school. Just last year, we had, uh, uh, drug dealing going on in the second floor bathroom. You know, and that was the talk, is that this is, this is what's going on at the school, and what are they doing about it? So, you know, at that time, I called the state patrol, we ran, we ran a dog through here, as you recall, you know, just, so I mean, I think it's, it's reasonable to take certain measures, and that's gonna, you know, gonna be a board's decision, but on any given time, somebody's gonna suggest that you have drugs in your school, or that, that something is going on. And it may or may not be true, you know, generally it isn't, but it, but it sure could be. So I, I think it's just that this is a, a reasonable safety measure, yeah, it does turn things up a bit, if it, if it works as a deterrent for kids, that. If it, if it works as a deterrent for kids, that, that's the best thing, we, we don't want a kid to ever test positive. And we hope that kids are maybe, kids who, who maybe are, are changing behaviors, because they know that every week or every whenever, their name comes out, I mean, that's just a risk, I guess, that, that they take, but it's.
So you say it's random, like, is it possible that the one student gets picked, student A gets picked first week of school, and then six weeks later, that same student gets drawn again?
They could pick the next week or the week after that, you could essentially get tested three times in a row. Yeah, that is a possibility, there could be some that never get tested throughout four years.
So if you're gonna do eighty a, a year, that's almost our whole high school.
But it wouldn't be, if it, once you get tested, you're pulled out, and then you're no longer, I mean, you go right back in, so it's still gonna pull from the same hundred kids.
There's other schools, I'm sorry.
You're still almost testing every kid we have in high school.
Well, that, that, no.
On average.
Yeah.
Every year. It almost is, at that point, you almost just say, test everybody, make it fair.
That's what I was wondering, what, what about the kids that aren't involved? Seems to me like they're kind of getting off the hook, I don't, maybe it's covered under another policy, but, you know. I, I don't think, normally the kids are out for activities, or kind of the kids that are a little more motivated, maybe, I don't know, I want to say.
How many kids do we have that are not involved in anything?
It's the one.
Because you're, you're talking about FFA, FCCLA, so. One act speech, I mean.
I bet it's hardly one out of ten.
I was gonna say, maybe ten percent.
Yeah.
But that's still ten percent of kids I could screen by, I mean.
Yeah, that was just my, I, I always wondered why it wasn't everybody, or.
But their parents could still opt them in, right.
Can you not legally make them, put them in the pool?
I don't think you can.
Because they're, all the, everything that you're doing is an option that they don't have to take, so.
Because I took, when I wrote this, I took, it was Central City, Newman Grove, Kennesaw, EV, Battle Creek, and Kimball was the other one. So I took all of their policies that they had, and every one of them did extracurriculars, none of them did the whole school. So I think there was something that legally you can't do, you have, you have to have some form of stipulation, and that's where the activities came in, or involvement.
Would, would you mind sharing your personal thoughts on the?
My personal thoughts?
Before, before your research on it, I mean, what would be your opinion of it and why?
I think in a community our size, and having grown up in a community this size, I saw different things when I was growing up. And if we can give the kids that maybe aren't as strong socially, that are very easily persuaded, a reason to get out of something or to not do something, I think that's enough for me. Because it's going to promote the health of all students, it's gonna help give those kids who might give in to peer pressure a reason to say no. You look on the flip side, it might push a few kids away from doing activities, because they would rather do other things that we don't deem that we want going on. So I don't know. But when it comes down to it, I, I think it's something that would answer a lot of questions, I think people would be able to say that we're taking it serious and that we're trying to make sure that kids come through here without being, I don't want to say exposed to different things, because I'm sure no matter what you do, you're gonna get exposed to stuff, but giving them a reason to avoid it.
Do we, do we do anything randomly for the staff at all, test?
Christmas party?
Clown catch.
Is there any reason why you picked the eighty number? You said eighty over the course of the year, right, two, two a week?
Yeah, I guess that's probably overkill, most of the schools that I look at, it's once a month, and I think the most I saw was twice a month, but normally it's just once a month that they would test, which.
Percentage or number?
Yeah, I believe the one school was six kids per month that they would test, I think another one was four. So I mean, I was just saying, if you test six over a month, that comes out to one and a half a week, whatever it might be, so.
I think the, the consistency of more routine, I mean, if you're gonna do it, and you want it to be, you know, once a month, it just, you know, a kid could, could know, okay, I need to be clean for X amount of days, because the test is coming up next week or whatever, so. If it's on a weekly basis and, and just more consistent, and more than one kid, when I was in Central City, they'd call six kids to the office, and, you know, and it would take some kids as much as an hour to get through that process, I mean, so we want to have minimal disruption, if, you know, if you go this route, minimal disruption, I think two kids on a routine basis is, is, is probably a good, because if your, your idea is deterrent, we just want to change behavior, we don't catch kids, we want to change behavior. So if, if every two weeks, they know, you know, they're, they're drawing two names, you know, and, and they can play the odds. But again, I don't think there, I don't think there's a, a big drug problem, I honestly don't. And again, we're pretty observant people, we're adults, I think we'd recognize, you know, if, if we've got, you know, something like that, and I think you made that comment, but to have a, a, a formalized process by a professional nurse-bath, and, and routine, consistent, I think it, it'll work as a deterrent, and I think you'll find that it's, you know, we, we don't have anybody testing positive, and that's what our goal is.
The test results are immediate?
Kyle, how long?
Yeah, I mean, it's within, I think, two minutes, somewhere around that.
So what was the process if somebody tested positive?
So the first offense I have would be fourteen days that they set out, and then every time you test positive, you get thrown in, and you get, you get tested monthly for a year after that, and then every time you test positive, you have to go to a licensed drug and alcohol counselor and complete that assessment within thirty days, which was nice, because Jenny Bender, who was gonna be our LMHP, she was a, yeah, she was a licensed drug and alcohol counselor, so we had one of those in the building, two days, we could tell that got changed from the issue, but, so that was part of it when I was writing it. The second offense is thirty calendar days, the third offense is a year, and then the fourth offense is for the lifetime of being a student at PHS.
So how are you gonna go about notifying those two or other students, if you're gonna broadcast it over the intercom, and so on, so on, so on, so on, coming to the office for drug tests?
Absolutely. No.
You're buying someone out of your way.
I mean, there's not really a discreet way of doing it, but I mean, I would just have to walk up to the room and get them and bring them down, so.
They're good enough.
Yeah. Anytime you get called on a Monday or Tuesday.
Fuel sample, be easier.
He's had me sitting there waiting a long time.
You know, back when I was an art schooler, buddy, with the drug, you were the non-athletes.
So if you're in any activities, like, you're in a, you're in the pool for a year.
Oh, I guess I don't like that random thing.
I agree, it's a fact.
I don't know.
I'll just get all of your parents, or?
That's what I would have to do.
You know what I'm saying?
Are we one of the few schools in the area that does not have drug testing policy right now?
I didn't mention EV, but.
Newman Grove, EV, Battle Creek, I don't know about peers.
So it's not uncommon, but it's not, you know, necessarily, you know, prevalent. I, I, I would just, you know, guess, if I could, that most parents would say, heck, yeah, but maybe not my kid, you know? I mean, they might have a, a concern about, you know, their kids', you know, privacy or rights or whatever, but yeah, I want, I want the school to make sure that we don't have drugs in the school, I want my school to be a clean, safe school. There are a variety of ways to do this, this is one way, I mean, we can, you know, obviously, you know, discuss other, you know, measures on how to keep the school drug free.
You know, how long, just a technical question, is a lot of these drugs stay in the system, I mean, do you have to do them every week to catch them? Or do you get them every other week, or they still be in their system for two weeks? Obviously, alcohol, but alcohol's probably gone twenty-four hours anyway.
No, two weeks, I mean, every other week testing you is probably fine, when you get on the monthly basis, I mean, if you test at the beginning of one month, and then wait until the end of the following month, there's a possibility they could get three something.
Is there a false positive rate on those tests?
I don't know what it would be.
Probably, probably minimal, but.
I'm just wondering, you know.
Because there is an appeal system, and so if a parent is upset if there was a positive test, and they know that their child was not, they're able to go and get their child retested if they want to.
They can take it to the hospital and get it worked out.
Yeah.
Mr. Sazara, depend on the drug and depend on the kid, how long it'd be detectable in their system, but, you know, again, I don't, I, I just don't think we're gonna catch.
I just think that every week is maybe a little overkill.
Especially if you don't notify them, what, you know, if you do it twice a month, and don't notify them, what it's gonna be.
No, no athletic performances being detected.
Your nurse here on specific days, but then.
That I would have to read into to know for sure.
It used to be Tuesdays and Fridays, I mean, she's.
But I can't give you a fresh answer.
You can't really, like, surprise them, because if you're having the nurse do it, she's here on specific days, right?
Yeah.
But if you did it, if you did it twice a month, like Mr. Sazara's saying, you could have it first week this month, then it's a third week, then the next month goes second and fourth, or whatever, just randomly pick a week.
Back to back days.
Yeah, just leave it up to them, pick whatever day she's here, you know, mix it up all the time, so they don't know.
I mean, that'd be easy enough to be random, I think.
And we can always adjust it, too, I mean, if we get started doing this.
If we get a couple positives, we need to ramp it up.
Yeah, we don't even have to do a full year, we can change it at any point in time, right?
Well, sure, yeah, your policy.
And I think, I didn't put in there specifically how often we would test. I think I just put it in as testing was takes place throughout the year, and that's all I left it as, so we could test as much or as little as we wanted to. So I mean, if we get two months into it, and we don't have anything, then yeah, we can lighten it up, or if we have a lot of issues, we can test more, I guess.
Maybe those schools that you mentioned, you know, we could have that data, we've got these eight schools that we put this policy around, here's where, here's when they all test, but you've got a month to play with as well.
It takes two months to.
It, it does, but you could even wait and do a July and an August reading. If, now that you've generated some good discussion, so, I mean, I, I get it, if you're not, you know, maybe comfortable voting, you could push that off another month, you know, and come back with some more information, if you had questions for Mr. Schmidt.
If they're talking about this, he loses happiness football team in the middle of August, he might have a different opinion, or he wants to do it.
All clean kids, all clean kids.
Could you, Mr. Schmidt, talk to these, some of these schools that you got this information, and ask how they feel about it? If it's become a, a burden, or is it a positive thing that they see from it?
I know, I've talked to two of them, EV and Newman Grove, Nurse Beth got that information from me and just sent it to me, so I didn't talk to them. But I've talked to Kimball, and I talked to Battle Creek, and I talked to Central City on the phone, and they all three, I mean, see it as a positive thing. They don't see it as a negative, and it's, I don't really know, I mean, the people who think that there's a real issue, there's not gonna be as many positives as what they think there are. I mean, like we said, there's not really, we don't feel that there's a big drug problem, but I think that just having that ability to test and look and see is, they all say that it's worth it, talking to them about it.
When the drug dogs come, does anybody know that's coming, or is it just Dr. Arnold?
It was random.
So you, you don't even know when they're coming?
No, I scheduled it.
You scheduled?
Yep.
Will we still do that, then, too?
We sure can, I mean, it.
I feel like that would catch somebody a lot easier than the. But that throws another ten percent in on the mix. Yeah, I mean, myself, I just feel like that, that's scarier.
That's check.
I think that would be more scary for a student, you know, smuggling some stuff around.
That's checking the school, it's not checking the body, you know, if somebody, let's see if there's a, which, nothing was detected. So we, we can, we can incorporate that as well, and, and, you know, I guess, I don't, I don't think it sends the message that we're worried about drugs in our school. If we were to ramp things up and say, if we've got a drug dog that comes through quarterly, nobody knows what it's gonna be, and if we've got random drug testing on a routine basis, I just, to me, I see that as the board's taking serious measures to make sure our school is drug and alcohol free, and not sending a message that we think we got a drug problem, and we gotta try to catch these kids, we gotta try to filter them out.
Yeah, I like the dog thing, too. Okay, so should we table this in, or bring back a few more details? What do we want, board?
Do you have a specific timeline, Principal Schmidt, you need this done by, I mean, it's table, and it gonna cause you an issue?
No.
It's have to have three.
Why do you know if you had to purchase a certain time, the school start, have the testing and the process, because, you know, they've got to be trained on how to do it, too.
Football starts in the middle of August, you know, if you're gonna start one of the first sports.
Those are under.
I'm comfortable with making a motion to approve it, I just.
What are the things that you want me to find out and get you answers?
You answer, but you're fine.
Because I mean, if there's more information that you want, I will get it.
Well, I think it spooks me about is liability, I mean, if you're using a spectrometer, or you're using a dipstick, you know, the false positives, and you get some parent defamation of character slander, those type of issues could be deadly to the school, so I want, I want, if you're gonna do it, make sure that it's reliable test.
I think that's pretty reasonable for people to expect.
I'm in favor of it, but I just don't want anything to come around, bite his neck.
Well, the most reliable test is about three hundred dollars a piece, if you're wondering, because I did start with the clinic up here and talk to the doctors and asked them what they had, and they had two separate tests, and one was cheaper, one was, you know, the most expensive one, so.
Was it cheap or was it costly?
How about if we, how about if we come up with a positive, that they have to go get the high dollar one right away, same day?
Do we pay for it, though, to the parents?
According to what you've got, it's their expense, second one.
If you wanted to appeal, it would be of your expense, that's what I have in mind.
What about giving them a second one immediately, if they're positive? Might have to feed them a bunch of water if you get their samples. Or within the twenty-four hours, if you want, you know, second one within twenty-four hours.
I mean, that's a great area, you could have answered by the second vote, you know? But yeah, I, I'm, you know, we gotta have something that's gonna be positive. Concrete positive. I mean, I, I understand, and I completely agree with what you're doing, I am with you on that, I just don't want it to come around us.
Yeah. I will do some more research, and I'll get on.
I'm gonna make a motion, and we'll see where it goes, but it doesn't have to be.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to policy number five oh four dot one five on first reading.
Second.
That means that we're gonna discuss it again next month?
Correct.
Before I do what I want to.
Yep.
You'll have more answers for, for the second.
Okay.
But if we make any changes, we have to start over again?
Mm-hmm.
To the motion. If we alter the, if we alter the motion next month to any changes, we have to start over and do it for two months.
So would it be better to table it and find out more information?
All right, I withdraw my second.
Would it be, would it make more sense to table it, and then?
Yeah, I agree, if, if we gotta do it that way.
After we have more information? That'll give us July and August.
Okay, I withdraw my motion, then.
We can give you a next month.
So do you know what, do you know what we want, because we kind of owe it to you.
I gotta look into reliability of tests, liability issues, what exactly we're all gonna be testing for these specifics on that, and then how other schools have handled false positives.
Yeah.
If you want something else on topic.
Even, even trainer, training of who's administrating, I mean, if that, that comes down, you get an attorney, they could smoke you on that. Were their hands clean, were the gloves clean, was she breathing on it, where was she, you know?
If somebody were so inclined.
Yeah.
And had the financial wherewithal, wherewithal, absolutely, you've heard stories.
Okay, so, Tim, discuss and take possible action on purchasing soft seating, love seats, and other furniture for senior lounge.
I don't know if that's really the best wording, but you've, you've heard me talk from time to time that our kids really have nowhere to go. Start of school as they gather in the hallway, during lunch as they gather in the hallway, so, you know, kids hang out in the hallway, and that's, that's fine. You know, in this area where our nook is, that little cutout nook, you know, that used to be a lounge area many, many years ago. But right now, our kids sit on. But, uh, right now our kids sit on the hallway floor, uh, which probably is not very sanitary. And, and also not, maybe not very safe because quite literally you, you have to step over them if you're going up and down the hallway. So, um, just in, in talking with Mr. Schmidt, but in looking at this myself, really over the past few years, I thought, um, if we just had some space where kids could, where it's intended for them to, this is where I can relax, this is where I can sit with my friends when we've got social time. This is where I might be able to finish up a little bit of homework or what, what have you. That's really the space that would be appropriate for that, where our line of senior lockers are in that cutout. Those lockers can come out and they can, they can be repurposed in a different, a different area, in a different hallway, probably. This one actually had become lockers for seventh graders. And that space and you have this, uh, item 17, kinda shows a, a little bit of diagram of what that could maybe look like with some back to back love seats and some little, uh, some little ottomans or little end tables where they've all got laptops now. Couple kids can sit in each love seat and they can, you know, they just can get off the floor. It'd be a, a, a nice place for them that I think they would think, you know, hey, we really kind of appreciate having, you know, the board thinking about a, a space for, get us, get us off the dog on floor. Say again.
College atmosphere.
A, a, a little bit and, and as I, you know, worked with Verco on looking for the right, uh, type of furniture, sent me many, many, many examples from schools and, and what their lounges look like or their cafeteria slash lounges and just the space that kids have to, this is where we can congregate. And not have to sit on the tile floor where people walk. So it wouldn't be a very large space, I don't know that we need a very large space, but so as you can see in that diagram, if there was one, two, three, four, five, six love seats, three ottomans separating those a little bit. You know, anywhere from two to 12, you know, kids would have a, a, a place to socialize. So, uh, furniture is expensive, school furniture is expensive, uh, kids are kind of hard on things as well. So, um, so when you look at, you know, the, the, the bid of 11,371, 80 for six love seats and three end tables, I mean, that's, yeah, I, I understand that's, uh, that's pricey, but they would be, they would, it would be quality, it'd look nice, school colors. Uh, and it would create a social space for our kids that isn't the hallway floor.
So when will these kids be using it, like during study hall or they don't?
No, 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 no. Primarily before school and, and during their lunch period. So there's, there's, you know, two main times when they congregate. They don't have time during pa, they wouldn't have time during passing period. Now, I will say that, but, you know, back in the day, the administrators used to chase us out of the pits in the middle of class all the time.
Back in that day, your office was our lounge.
Yeah.
That's, but that's for sure, it was, the floors were made out of dirt.
Oh, jeez! Are, your initials were DB, they're still carved into the wood grain panel in the back corner.
Right in there.
Yeah, so.
I'm being honest, it was our lounge.
I said, oh, when they got the crew, we were in carpet, it was back in those days.
Yes, yes, I bet the carpet and pan, it looks exactly the same, I'm sure, but at any rate.
Just a wall.
At any rate, yeah.
Is there security cameras there, so?
That's a no-uh.
Not in my office.
No, not your office.
There, there is actually, and that's coming up on your next item as well to, to cover more of our space. So, um, you know, there's, there, yeah, the, Esther money won't pay for this, obviously, you know, I, I know that, that, that would be ideal. But, uh, we are paying for some things that now does, uh, free up some other funds that would have been used out of general fund that are now being paid for out of Esther funds, but, uh, because I understand that 11,371 dollars is.
You put in there though, but it's the student council.
I, I, I did look into, and, yes, thank you, I did look into having the, the student council. Student council generates a lot of funds from soda machine and, and other things. Probably reasonable to, uh, steal money from the student council fund to help fund this. But that would take several years, so we would kind of reimburse, obviously, this is a general funding expenditure. We would reimburse maybe on an annual basis, um, the general fund from the activity fund, student council light item.
Have you talked to student council kids about this?
Uh, not formally, I haven't, I don't believe Mr. Schmidt has either, kinda want it to be a surprise for him.
Oh, okay.
I kinda like the idea of having the seventh graders maybe away from the rest of the group a little bit too, their first year over here and they're, you know, they're a little timid or whatever, maybe don't get beat on the head quite as often as you're not standing beside a senior at the locker.
Kids love and respect our seventh graders.
Is this intended to be just for the upperclassmen?
Not necessarily, but it will be, Tim, probably, cause the senior lockers are gonna be right across the hallway. Right, right, so that, there were, there were unofficial rules in the pits back in the day too, and that just was the way it was. So I don't think any, uh, underclassmen, particularly a seventh, eighth or ninth grader, would probably feel comfortable maybe hanging out right there, but, you know, to, however, the school student body works, so it works. They'll, they'll make it clear if they probably want somebody to say, that's where I sit, that's kind of the rules of the road a little bit.
The material of them easy to disinfect, we have to get back into disinfecting stuff. I mean, is it that kind of, I don't, it's not a cloth.
Uh, fully upholstered, brushed a little bit. Fabric.
It'd make it a lot easier on the janitors if it's easy to.
It's just vinyl.
You know, there's bus seats left in that little bus.
Spray painted red.
It's green, it's, it's probably green, but yeah.
Can you get them in vinyl instead of fabric?
Um, I would have to check, I mean, I looked at quite a variety of different, uh, pieces of furniture.
Yeah, especially where you sell, you know, drinks and stuff here, they're color and they're gonna get spilt on.
I mean, I could, I could check on that, I mean, um.
So if we approve that amount and you find something that's, you know, easily clean.
Yeah.
Go ahead and do it.
Okay.
If you can, I guess, yeah, bring it back.
I'm not sure you wanna get on it, so it's definitely start of school.
Yeah.
So we could approve that amount.
Can we at least say it's at 12 people?
Depends on the width of your hips. They're, 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 they're a love seat, so, um, 44 and a half inches.
That's about how deep to pack them.
Hallway here, probably 12 people, we're gonna solve a whole issue of people sitting in there and getting knocked over, but.
What about all the furniture the city's got in storage?
Where's that at? You can have it, you find it.
Bus side, the bus seats are there.
Are we calling it a senior lounge then, Dr. Arnold?
No, I mean, I just wanted to kind of, yeah.
Well, can you make a motion for that amount and then if it's more than?
I think so, I mean.
Next month?
It'd be easier discretion to get the best, that's the amount. If you don't think these are gonna fit what we want and it's gonna be a lot more, I guess, I'll have to bring it back. I mean, you have, you said you saw a lot of stuff, was everything in this price range?
Just do, well, these were, you know, they're much greater quantities than this is, but, uh, but yes. This, the variety of things I saw were coming from Verco. Verco is a premier, uh, school furniture business. So, you know, they're, and we get most of our furniture from Verco, student desks and, and the like.
What do you guys say, maybe I'm really wrong there.
Oh, I like the idea.
Kind of protection on the furniture, scotch, stuff like that, I guess would be the other option.
What about instead of having like seats out there, you just take, you just move the lockers like they're saying and just have a little more open space, cause I kind of agree with Jeremy back there, like, we're not gonna eliminate the problem by having 12 seats for people to sit on, you know, the hallway.
You're gonna improve it.
Improve it, there you go, but you'd also improve it by just taking the lockers and moving them down here, you have that little.
So kids can just sit on the floor there?
Yeah.
I don't want kids sitting on the hallway floor, hallway floors are not meant for kids to just sit.
And that's where we sat.
But.
There are a lot more kids at school.
We want, we want our kids to.
Should take the pits out.
Enjoy the school, appreciate school, like.
I think they prefer it's that way, danger, like liability.
Slip and fall.
Too bad those are unique.
With those, we used to be like heading down over here, there's two sets of them, one by the concession stand, went down here. Just dug in, stabbed you. Yeah, we're good to sit around.
Is there anything down over here that these people consider, or no?
Those tables.
Are they still there?
We didn't have them there during the school year.
Oh, okay.
Well, you probably will next year with.
I don't know, not sure.
Were there high top tables, did I see one?
They're, they're, uh, they're bar stool type tables or not.
Well, should we make a motion that for that amount of money, if you use your discretion to get the best, easiest to clean? If you can't do it for that, you operate it back.
Right.
You still got the barbed ones?
The what?
You still got the old furniture, barbed up?
Yeah, these, these are just three tables that are out here in front of our Hall of Fame by our concession stand, so people had a place to eat their concessions. Which we got full refunds for all those, by the way, because they, I'm dissatisfied with them, so they sent a full refund, said keep the table, so.
I'll make a motion to purchase furniture for a lounge, a student lounge, an amount of, what was it, 11,000 dollars?
11,371, 80.
Yes.
That's your whole motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll second it.
Please?
Then a first and second, why?
No.
Yeah?
Yes.
Chance?
No.
Doctor Thor?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries four two. Okay, number 18, discuss and take possible action on adding indoor and outdoor safety surveillance cameras and monitor.
Case so been mentioned for several years as well, that we want to continue to increase the, the percentage of surveillance that we have in our buildings. Folks that we've been, that have been taking care of us all these years is DSN out of Hardington. So he's done two sweeps, uh, with me through the buildings, inside and out. And so this would get us, this would probably be honestly the last addition of surveillance cameras that I think we would need. So, once these are in, obviously, we can assess, uh, the footprint, the interior footprint of our, of our buildings and exterior, cause we're gonna add some to our main entrance ways, exterior ones to the main south doors, north doors. Cause right now we cover the, we, exterior wise, we cover the locker room area where we have a whole lot of student traffic. We cover that exterior, we did add exterior ones to the playground, uh, which helped us catch a vandal last year. So, but we do have a lot of hallway space and none of our 1920 building, uh, that are not covered by surveillance. They're invaluable in terms of finding out what the story is when we got, you know, issues with kids. They're invaluable with regard to this hallway, people getting in lockers, which rarely happens, cause they know they're on camera, so they don't. And when they occasionally do, boom, there you are. So, um, they're, they're just a great deterrent and, uh, from time to time, they help us identify, uh, you know, behavior that we need to address.
So these are gonna be mostly an entrance ways?
No, but they'll be included in this package.
That's what I mean, this package is gonna help with the entrance.
Yes, the main north and south entrance, uh, you know, the building, so we always know who's coming in and who's leaving at certain times, which is important.
Do they have sound on them then too, or is this just video?
No, just, just video, no audio. Well, I could, bet I could get them with audio, but you know what that'll do to the price.
So how close are the ones, first ones we got to being outdated or?
We, we do have a handful of them that don't provide the quality of video that these would, uh, but they're still sufficient, you think, Kyle and Heather? I mean, we don't have where it's too grainy to where we can't, it doesn't do us any good.
They still support them and all that, they're not gonna just throw them off.
Yeah.
The eight terabyte storage, is that cloud storage or is that actually gonna have a storage device here in, inside the building?
That I don't know, where.
It's not.
Yeah, I.
It's easily upgradable or if you actually have to piece enough, you know, buy another piece of equipment anyway, if you run out of storage.
That I don't know.
It's another subscription fee, so.
Yeah.
Any more, I mean, everything going up in the cloud, I mean, it's, it's easily upgradable, so.
There's one less piece of equipment.
Always good to be. Then we'll need it out of.
Yeah.
Do we have them in the, uh, classrooms then too, too?
Nope, 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 your teachers' union will go crazy.
All right, I'll make the motion except for the DSN security purchase failed cameras and monitors, amount 11,960 dollars. Second.
First and seconded, Doctor Thor?
Yes.
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Yep.
Myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Number 19, discuss and take possible action on bid to repair or replace AC unit for the Ag building classroom.
This would be S R fund eligible, so this could be covered under your S R three.
So this one is available, but the one here isn't?
We lost the AC, well, Carlson's bid this one.
Yeah.
Carlson's has done a lot of our, uh, smaller, uh, AC units, obviously, they did in 1920 building, so this was ruts.
Was that a COVID thing or they just didn't get on the ball?
I, I don't know, I told Gail, you know, get back in touch with them and, you know, why didn't we get that bid? So, uh, but yes, your, your classroom down at the Ag shop is currently not air cooled.
How long has it not been warming?
Oh, it was after the cooling season last year, so we knew, it, they, they had some warm days this spring. But ideally before we have six weeks.
Sometimes that's all it went out.
Yeah. If I, if I recall, yeah.
None of the classrooms are more important than gyms.
I'll make a motion except for Carlson, hope not, or replace the cooling unit at the Ag shop classroom in the amount of 10,791 dollars.
I'll second it.
First and seconded, myself, yes, why?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Doctor Thor? Yes.
Deb? Motion carries six zero. And reports, committee directors report.
The summer activities are underway, weight room's up and running, we had, um, 88 total students so far, pretty much daily that come through, uh, right around the same, 27 high school boys, 26 high school girls and around 35 junior high students that are there on a daily basis. So, really good numbers with that. If you've been down by the track, you see all the concrete work is done for the runways and for our jumping pits. Um, that has to cure for 30 days before the company can come in and resurface it. So they have us scheduled to resurface, uh, at the beginning of July, within the first couple of weeks of July right now. So, that's when they'll be here to take care of that. The lights are scheduled to be dropped off on June 21st, so that's a week from today. Um, and then once that's here, they'll start putting all those together and putting them up. Camp wise, uh, summer's pretty full, but we've had a couple of volleyball things that have taken place already and then basketball is out in camps and traveling and doing stuff right now. Um, and then junior pirate volleyball's going on on Tuesdays. And then in July, we get full fledge into volleyball ready for our August and football camps. And then come August, we get started, so that stuff's going on as we speak. And junior high sports, I brought up last week, so I put some stuff together for that. Last year when we talked about doing junior high sports outside of the school day, there was three concerns that came up. Being able to fill all of our coaching positions was one of them. So last year, we had twenty-two total coaches, nineteen for sports and eleven in junior high. This year, we have all of our coaching positions filled and we have twenty-eight total coaches now and twenty-six that are coaching sports. We actually have more people coaching this year than we did last year. Lightens the burden for some of our, some of our coaches, so they're not coaching quite as many things. So hopefully it will improve some of our retention. Last year, we had eleven junior high coaches, this year we will have twelve junior high coaches, so. Not going to be quite as much crossover there and doing quite as much. Also, the other one was participation numbers. We thought that it would lose participation if we did junior high sports after school, we actually had more kids out for junior high sports this year than we did the year before. And that was with a pretty good sized freshman class coming in, I know our seventh graders, we were worried about them not going out for stuff. And we actually had more go out than what we had anticipated, so that was a good thing to see. And then the last one was practice times and being able to practice late at night, especially during the winter seasons. Because we had basketball overlapping and in the gyms. And when I went back through, we had six girls practices that were at night and we had four boy practices that were at night. And I know we had a few morning ones in there, but I didn't, I didn't count those, I just went through and did the night ones to get that number for them. So, educationally speaking, that last period of the day, they have P E and health. Along with that, they're also getting to take keyboarding, computer applications along with art. So really, by them being in there, they're getting to take an additional, two classes to what they already would have been. And if we do junior high sports during the day, technically a kid can take, be in a sport every single season and not take P E or health one time. Throughout the course of a school year. And with state standards, we have to teach P E and health at the junior high level, so it makes it kind of hard for us to complete that if we do it during the school day. And then the last thing would be having to pick up students. With doing a during school practice, kids would be able to get out on the bus, forty minutes isn't long enough for a practice. So if we were to go back to that, you would still have to come and pick up your kids. Cause I would expect coaches to keep kids there until four thirty and practice for ninety minutes and make sure that we're getting a full practice in. So. But that was information that I have. That I think that was my, I didn't miss anything.
So is there any merit, you know, we had a concern sent us last month and offered some different classes available in that time slot, is there any merit to looking at some of those?
Actuary's ad, that wasn't.
Yeah, it was one of them, but I don't know if that would ever work in that time slot, but she had, there was, I don't remember the other one she said, but there.
Boder safety, hunter safety, you know, things that, you know, courses that you can take on the internet at your own time.
But even if, if not those, is there anything else that could be offered, other than just health and P E?
Well, I mean, they are taking their technology courses when they're doing it and art. I think to say that our kids don't gain anything, that would probably offend those two teachers if you were to tell them that. But I mean, with us going one to one, the keyboarding and computer apps class is going to be a big, a big push for us right now, just in learning the Google Drive, learning the Chromebooks. Last year was our first year of doing it, and now another year of doing it, hopefully we can push that farther down into the elementary. So that way, when they get to junior high, it's more of a business class and she can use it as an introductory and recruiting tool for business classes. Since it's not mandatory in high school. Would be how I see that taking place. Same as for art and F F A and F C C L A and those classes that all rotate, they get each get a quarter. And that's essentially what our keyboarding and art classes would get, they get essentially a quarter with kids.
I think driver's education was mentioned too.
Driver's traditionally offered in the summertime, we don't have anybody that can teach it right now. I mean, if we did, I'm sure we will find a way to make that possible here in school.
We won't be able to go very far in forty minutes with three or four kids either, getting time out.
Yeah. In boder education, that'd be a great thing you can do during study hall, we did it over two days, so.
Thanks, sir, bring that information.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, principals are.
You or me?
Okay, so the first thing we have is summer school, so the number that was on the admin report is fifty-one for summer school. At the beginning of summer school, we actually had fifty-five students enroll and we had six disenroll. So, we're down to forty-nine, but we are doing attendance prizes and it's amazing, our attendance each day, we're close to forty-five. If not more each day. We actually had thirty-eight students last week with perfect attendance, so it's been going great. And teachers are able to dive in, we have two interventionists. So, Mrs. G and Mrs. Hostert are both available through summer school, so we have interventionist for all classes scheduled. Teachers have done pre-tests and we'll make sure that you have the data for pre-test versus post-test. And they have done those with both reading and math, because those are our main focuses for summer school. So I'm hoping to see some great growth just in those sixteen days. There are a couple of students that we will be meeting with families at the end of summer school to discuss some possible retention. So I wanted you to be aware of that. And if you'd like to review policy five oh two eleven, so that's our retention policy. And it does say in there that it is admin recommendation, but along with classroom, art recommendations of teachers. And through academic achievement, so any of these decisions that we're coming to are. Yes, we take in parent consideration, but it's, it's really looking at where can that student be successful for the following year? So I just wanted to let you know that we will be having some, some meetings with families, younger students for possible retentions for next year. And Dr. Arl did ask me to put together some data information for you. So I have a couple of slides that I'd like to run through, go ahead, Kyle. And so this is a beginning of year comparison from last year to this year. So if you're looking at the light green, that is where that grade level started with our MAP test, and MAP is measure of academic progress. Last year, and then the dark green is where that same grade level started, so this is kind of showing COVID. If you notice at the bottom, I do only have first through eleventh, twelfth grade doesn't test MAP test. And we don't do kindergarten at the beginning of the year, we do them in the middle of the year. So that's the reason that those two grade levels are not represented, this is reading. So you can see, we had some, some very significant loss. That first grade class, you'll notice that their loss is the most significant in all of the tests. Which is something that we've talked about, you know, kindergarten at the end, your fourth quarter in kindergarten is when you're really kind of taking off. And that class lost that opportunity with COVID. So this is reading, and the next slide, this is math. So again, the lighter blue is last year and the darker blue is where we started the year this year. Okay?
What's the typical, there's typically a drop there anyway, isn't there?
Yep, so we typically do have a summer drop, now when you're looking at those two, if you go back, Kyle. If you're looking at those two, you're looking at completely different classes. So the only way you'll be able to look at same grade level to same grade level is if you look at the light blue first grade. And then go to the light blue second grade, so that would show the same group of students.
So, that makes one more.
Yes, so you do see some dip there. Yep. So that's the way, and I do have another slide that'll show the growth for one school year. So this is for this school year. The light green is reading at the beginning of the year. And then the dark green is where that same class was at the end of the year. So you can see these students who came in averaging about thirty-five percent went up and are now much higher. So, great growth. And again, this is based on the average of the class. So, I will have another slide that shows more individualized, not totally individualized, but we'll break down the class a little bit more. This is the same thing with math.
Do you see the same tendencies kind of follow individual classes, not so much year to year, but just class to class?
So you can see that, you know, if I were to lay this out for several years, you would see trends with certain grade levels being. Or certain classes might be a little bit lower than that same class next year or a little bit higher, yeah, so you would see that. But, so that last one just showed growth through the year with math. Okay, this next one will show you in reading at the end of the year. So the way MAP test breaks it down is they'll, they'll tell us if they're in the fortieth percentile or below. When students are at the forty-first percentile to the sixtieth percentile, that's what MAP deems average. So anyone from forty-one to sixtieth, which is this dark green, is our average. Now, this orange is the sixty-first percentile or above. So, what's really exciting when I look at this is all the orange. So I wanted to break it down a little bit more, because on the previous ones, we were looking at forty-first up to a hundredth percentile in those. Here, this shows you, okay, so this is the group that we would probably be serving more in interventions, that fortieth and below. Does that make sense? And so that just shows every grade level at the end of the year this year.
Why do you think the high school improved so much? Is there a change in what you get in curriculum or something?
You mean, why do they have so many that are sixty percent above?
Yeah, I mean, there's such a jump for.
Yes, this doesn't necessarily show that they, any improvement. So this shows how many ninth graders were above the sixty-first percentile. So if your orange is all the way up here, then naturally your greens are going to be lower.
So that, those classes are just better at reading.
Yes, yes, so that would be an overall higher class probably. So like when you look at the second grade, when we looked at them, their data previously, they were already pretty high at the start of the year. But this shows that while the previous might not have, you might not have seen as much growth. You probably saw a lot of kids go from the fortieth to the sixty-first or from the sixtieth to the eightieth percentile. So that's what this one's showing. I do have these printed out for you as well, you want to go to math? So this would be our math data at the end of the year. Again, fortieth percentile being first, and see that second grade class again. Fortieth and then forty-first to sixtieth and then above. Any questions? I just wanted you to make, to be able to see some of our data, we won't get our N S C A S data, which is the state data, and so that's third and up. We won't get that until mid next month. We'll get kind of the first looks at it, middle of next month. So this is just MAP, which is our district wide assessment. And we will continue next year to, so this year we did MAP at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. We thought it was very important that we have all three tests to see growth first semester, growth second semester, and then growth over the year. We will do that next year as well. With COVID, it's just super important to have more data points. But we'll also not test kindergarten until the middle of the year, because they just don't have the computer skills to take the test. Okay, so that is all I have for data.
Is your, is it your I X L, is that the one they get online?
Yeah.
Do you see any correlation with the classes that do a lot more of that and how they?
Hundred percent, so. In the elementary building, we used, so on I X L, there are skill plans that are completely individualized. So when students take a MAP test, they're given a R I T score. Which R I T is not an acronym for anything, it just is the score that they get. But we're able to go into I X L and based on that student's R I T score, assign the skills that they are ready for. Which doesn't necessarily mean their grade level skill. So, we had students in fifth and sixth grade working on ninth and tenth grade skills. So those orange, I, I really do feel like that's why so many more pushed to orange and ended up in the eighty-ninth percentile or the ninetieth percentile. Because, yes, they're getting their core fourth grade instruction, but they're also working at their individualized level, which might be seventh grade. So, I do think I X L helped quite a bit with that. And we're still, for summer school, teachers have gone in and end of year tests, they're using student R I T scores to individualize I X L again for summer school. So. Oh, and that's what's next, right?
Her professional.
No, I X L. So when you look at I X L as a district, we answered almost a million questions, which is great. And of those million, eighty-six percent of the questions were answered during the school day. But we did have students who still worked on I X L at home, so fourteen percent of them were, were answered after school or on weekends. And then I put two, I put two spreadsheets or two graphs in there that just talk about the I X L long-term effect. And so again, that goes to speak to us, you approving and purchasing I X L for three years. So you can look at, when you look at a school that has used I X L for one year, they may be at forty-first percentile. Second year, they're moving up, third year, they're moving up. So I really do think as long as we continue to use it effectively, we're going to see it continue to help our students grow.
On that graph there, what is that, what is that measured against, it says percentage met or mastered grade level, is that its own measuring tool, or is that state?
So, so we have our I X L skills, we can align them to the Nebraska state standards. And then it has all of those skills on it, so I think at each grade level, you know, there's two hundred eighty-six math skills or. And so that's the number of those skills that students are mastering.
So that's only showing the, the skills in that software, or is that, I'm just wondering.
So the skills in the software are directly correlated to Nebraska state standards.
So they're, they're passing the state standards at these, these rates, is what it's showing?
Using I X L as a measuring tool, yes. So, it's, it's not giving them MAP questions, it's not giving them N S C A S questions. So MAP and N S C A S are what we would use to actually say, yes, they're, they're mastering, they, they've met that skill. But with I X L, it gives them similar type questions and students reach their SMART score with every skill. And so once students have reached eighty-five percent accuracy, ninety percent accuracy, they're considered mastered on that specific skill.
So is, I'm, I'm just wondering, is it kind of saying that the longer they use the software, the better they get at scoring on the software?
No, I think it's saying the better they get at those individual skills. And the skills change with each grade level.
Okay, so it's, but it's not measured against like, they're doing better on the tests at the state level?
Right, so I X L has their data, but it's, it's not.
Okay, so you can't draw, I'm just saying you can't draw a direct correlation between they're using I X L more.
Right.
And you can show the improvement on state scores.
Right, but as we continue to get those state scores, then it'll be, we'll be able to draw a correlation for our students, yeah.
Once we get some lunch.
Took the data and broke it down, when we set up intervention skills for our students, we kept those note. So we were able to look at these students used I X L during interventions or other students maybe didn't hit it.
maybe didn't hit it quite as hard. And we definitely could see bigger growth between the ones that hit it hard and were very diligent in our interventions that we were using versus a student that didn't have to do the intervention.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. That, that, that data's not shown on the graph, though. That's just seen.
No, no, this is, these are graphs directly from IXL. And even when you look at, you know, the IXL rock stars in the elementary level, when you look at ones that were consistently answering more questions, their growth was bigger on the MAP test. So the next thing is para-professionals. So, we do have Ann Spunlock, who will be joining the elementary special education classroom full-time. So, she will be a para in there. And then we are in the process of filling another para position for the spread room with two part-time applicants. So, it just worked out that we have two fabulous preschool moms who have their kids in opposite, ones in morning, ones in afternoon, and so we'll be able to fill that position, hopefully, with those two. We will still need one para in the library, and then Kyle will need one more in high school special education.
Are these paras that we lost, or were you just adding them?
Yes, so we lost two and a half in our special education classroom, just because they were certified teachers, and so they went and got teaching jobs.
We're, we're able to, just, we're, we're able to pay for two of our paras with federal funds through Title I. Also, additional para professionals, just like teachers, would be eligible under, under our S or III funds. And, if you've got good paras, that's the best money a district can spend. So we've been pretty doggone fortunate. When we lose good people, we, we tend to find good people.
Last thing we had on there is, we're going to be working through handbooks. We should be able to bring a handbook next month, I would assume, maybe. But, get you a handbook next month. Anything, any changes or any updates like that we can bring to you guys, so you're aware of it before the school year gets started.
Art, I'm kind of surprised on the IXL that only fourteen percent of the questions were asked, answered after school, because like, Exton, he like loved that thing. He wa, he did it all the time. He's still has to do it sometimes.
Yeah, we, so, in the element, and I know they had built-in timed intervention in the secondary building, but in the elementary building, we had, teachers needed to have a minimum of fifteen minutes three times a week. So you're thinking forty-five minutes in each classroom where every student in the class is on.
Gotcha.
So, that builds up your percentages pretty quickly.
He could have been a really big part of that fourteen percent.
Was the fourteen percent, like, more elementary? A lot of them.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the older you get, the more you're busier.
Yeah.
But yeah, because I know Merritt Tar did it a lot too.
A lot, yeah.
I heard those two names a lot in the...
Yeah, it's amazing what they'll do to that star with their name on it, and that low pop.
Okay, is that it? All right? Let's have a couple things. Mr. Thompson, is this your last meeting?
It is, yes.
I just want to wish you and Patrick luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time here. I think you've done a wonderful job, and brought some new light into our school system, and got us kind of shot in the arm a little bit, and some of this stuff. I appreciate your efforts. The other thing is, I just, thank you, our, congratulations to the track teams that made it to state, and I'm not going to name names, we didn't want to miss anybody, and track and golf ball coaches and, and the participants. I think they did pretty good. I think they kind of outdid what they were expected to do, or expecting to have done. So, congrats to them. So that's all I have. Superintendent report.
Okay, the summer projects that the board approved over the previous months, Mr. Schmidt, I think, mentioned a couple things, particularly with the track and the field lights. You, you've got some, some fresh concrete, which always looks just super nice. But you'd, you'd have to travel down to the track to see some of that preparation work, a lot of it, but also right outside the locker room doors. I mean, that's just a vast improvement, I mean, just from before and after, so, so that's awesome to have. Next month, the, the retaining walls start coming out, that's a couple weeks away yet. And then, you know, the garage pour, we're still working with the zoning board, and then we're going to need the city council to work with us maybe on that, as we did get a survey, official survey to find lot lines and... So we're, we're right up against, you know, for the dimensions of that garage, we're right up against the space that we have. So, you might need the good graces of the, of the city council. I don't know what, you know, they have the permit, and they have all the information, so at the July city council meeting, they'll be making a decision on whether to allow us to build a garage of that size. So, we will be able to come back and reassess that if we have to, and, and make a determination about scaling it down, or, or whatever, which, which could be done. But we'd really like to go with that thirty-six by forty-two in that space. And so, I've been working with Mr. Tar, and it's in the hands of the zoning board at this point in time. So, the, as you know, the elementary project is paid down, the most expensive project in the history of Plainview Public Schools. Paid down in, in three years' time, so, and we got it, we're ahead of ourselves. COVID was, is now all about air quality, and you improve the air quality of that building immeasurably. So, it's good to have that paid for. I do have a facility energy audit that I mentioned last month that I had ordered. That is complete, and so probably our building and grounds committee will need to assess that. It could be a big part of your S or III money, if you want it to be, which would include, you know, the air quality of, of this building and tying that all in, replacing those boilers. Now may be the wise time to do that, with, you have a, a significant amount of funds at your disposal, but probably buildings and grounds will need to probably assess that facility audit in the next month. And it doesn't have necessarily be done in the next month. We've got some time on the S or III money, but probably, you know, the sooner you, you start talking about it and get, just keep that conversation going, the better. End-of-the-year state reports are complete, and we turn the page to the next school year, you know, kind of formally and officially with regard to the state, and it will be here in a hurry. And that is all I have for you, unless you have any questions for me.
I haven't heard anything back about the wood shop, the equipment stuff. Did that get ordered? Are we going to give it?
It is in process. I mean, it has been a while since we talked to, to Craig, but they, they did get our tax identification information. I do need to follow up on that, but I believe it's moving. Yes.
I know COVID was going to back, back...
I'm, I'm anticipating that, quite honestly. But, but yes, it's been over a month since I, I've checked into the status of that process and of that order, so I thought about it a time or two, but just haven't called Craig to find out.
Protest ever materialized?
Nothing.
Nothing ever happened?
No protesters. I was kind of excited about that. It's some good drama across the street.
Do you have that on, somewhere?
All talk and no action.
That's what it was. So I'm happy to report nothing.
Okay, anything else? We are adjourned.